Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Schlier from Miss Vegas. I do welcome all the attendees tonight, the media, guests. We appreciate you being here. We have a chance to review the agenda as printed. Any additions or corrections? Most of my overhanders adopt the agenda as printed, set by David Galat. All those in favor? Raise your right hand if some still have last names. Any opposition? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the regular session of June 2nd. Have a chance to review those minutes. Any corrections, say it clerical. You have a motion? Motion by Danny Hancock, second by Debbie Abrams. Do we approve the minutes of June 2nd as printed? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those... Any opposition? Motion carries. All right. Recognize the new principal. Who's taking care of that?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Bill.
It's always a pleasure to have an episode where we recognize people that are new to the leadership role within the district. And tonight, one of those nights, and it's always fun. We have lost, of course, one principal from Glenview into the central office, who was Janet Comstock. And then, of course, Ms. Patrice Hilton, who was principal, I think, 27 years. She was in education for 44, 45 years.
Forty-six.
Forty-six years, thank you. And so, other type of people that are difficult to replace. But that job comes along, and we have to tackle it, and we have the right teachers, we think, to fill those two positions. So tonight, we did have two new principals. And those two principals will reside at Glenview and Hillcrest Elementary Schools. And there's in the back, I'll have to go through your ladies' stand. I'll introduce you after the stand. Ms. Lauren King, who is in the running deck there, is coming to us from Cypress Springs Elementary. She's been curriculum strategist, coordinating teacher there for several years. And we're delighted that she will be going to Hillcrest. And of course, she's replacing a legend there, but she'll be fine. And she has meant a lot to the parish and to the district already. She's been a goddess in studies. And so, Ms. King worked a lot, you know, if you're going to be a principal at Hillcrest Elementary School. Did you all say a word before we move on with Dr. Newt?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, just thank you, Lincoln Parish and the school board, for the opportunity to step into this legend's shoes. I know that there are lots of challenges ahead and changes ahead, but as long as we keep our eyes on the horizon, I think all of it is accomplishable. So I'm looking forward to this year and many more.
Thank you. And I do want to mention, too, of course, we had quite a few folks interview for the position, and came out, came down, and did too. And so, they were top in their interview categories, and so we appreciate that. And secondly, we have Dr. Sheila Nugent. Dr. Nugent comes to us from Silsburg School, and has had multiple roles. She's former elementary teacher, and then did some elementary supervision, and then she does some things there at middle school. I think they've used you, our views to you, Dr. Nugent, more than one way out. But a lot of the success that Dr. Silsburg has had now at H. School can be attributed to a great staff out there. Mr. Farah, he was one of the first ones to take him, and Dr. Nugent's one of those great staff members. So, Dr. Nugent, welcome to the leadership role. Welcome to Glenview. We're looking forward to your role there. And you, welcome to the team.
Thank you so much. Well, as Lauren said, we have a very exciting year ahead of us, a lot of new curatory to cover. And I'm very excited and pleased and feel so privileged and blessed to be at Glenview. It's an outstanding school. It has some outstanding educators. And I just can't wait to help them to grow even further and to help our students grow, ultimately to help the students in Lincoln Parish achieve success. So thank you so much for your confidence in me, and I pray that I will do my best every day.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your opinion. We welcome both of y'all. And this board doesn't always like to challenge our new principals. We don't have a list of layups right now, but we'll get to them. But no, we do appreciate what y'all do. And I know it is a challenge. I know my father was a school principal, so I know a little bit about what y'all go through. And of course, these new times, who knows what we're all going to go through? But we do appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
All right. Kathy Cox, one of y'all. She is here. Louisiana Art Education Association Elementary Art Teacher Award.
It is indeed a pleasure to be with you tonight to recognize one of Lincoln Parish's brightest shining stars. Lauren Dixon, art teacher at Dubac School, has been honored with the Louisiana Art Education Association Elementary Art Teacher Award, making her the top elementary art teacher in the state. Of course, Lauren is no stranger to accolades. She was previously named as Teacher of the Year at both Dubac and Glenview Elementary School, and was honored last year as the first teacher in Lincoln Parish to receive the Superintendent Spotlight on Success Award, as well as being recognized by the National Art Education Association with its Southeastern Elementary Art Educator of the Year Award. However, Lauren is more focused on seeing that her students are the ones put in the spotlight. Lauren began her art career at Dubac in 2013, empowered with the freedom and support to make decisions that have ultimately shaped the award-winning program. Since then, she has created an exciting and thriving space for students of all ages to come feel safe and uplifted, while stimulating their minds by transforming all types of materials and mediums into beautiful pieces of art. Lauren loves watching her students become confident and proud of what they make on their own, and offers them a wide array of techniques from which to learn. She has worked tirelessly to create such a space where students get excited about creating, learn about new art techniques, work through situations to problem-solve during lessons, and exhibit pride when presenting their work to others. Lauren's student artwork has been recognized on the local, state, and national level. Student work from Dubac has been presented to two of Louisiana's first ladies, and exhibited in everywhere from the Louisiana Governor's Mansion, the Kane River Creole National Historic Park, Dixie Center for the Arts, and even Washington DC, when Dubac was chosen to collaborate with members of Duck Dynasty to participate in the National Ornament Display for the National Christmas Tree. Perhaps the most exciting project came when Lauren led Dubac to winning the Bonus Bulldog Contest, and then produced the final design for the City of Ruston Bulldog Project, which is now on display in the new Ruston Sports Complex for visitors from across the country to enjoy. Lauren shares that the Dubac community has been supportive since the first day of the program, adding that its success is a direct result of strong community involvement. However, Lauren leads by example, volunteering in events across Lincoln Parish that allows her to not only share her artistic talents, but also involve her students in showcasing their work as well. Whether the Peach Festival Art Exhibit, Spring and Fall Makers Fair Event, North Central Louisiana Arts Council Exhibit, the Dubac Chicken Festival, Mardi Gras Silent Auction, Holiday Arts Tour, or other events, Lauren has ensured that Dubac shines at each. And the Dubac Art Show and Silent Auction has become one of the most anticipated events in the community, bringing stakeholders from across the parish to participate. Dubac Principal Pam Pruden has said that the art program at Dubac is second to none, adding that Lauren's talents as an artist and teacher come together to create an essential experience for all students at the school. Lauren herself adds that art should be viewed as an important part of a student's educational experience, that it can truly uplift students like nothing else. Her principal also states that there is no one else that can compete with Lauren when it comes to producing a robust elementary art program, something that the Louisiana Art Education Association obviously agrees with. And I know you agree with me that Lincoln Parish is certainly the better for having an exemplary educator like Lauren working within one of its schools. Therefore, it is my tremendous honor and privilege to present to you the latest award-winning educator from within the Lincoln Parish district ranks. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating the LAEA Elementary Art Teacher of the Year and someone whose creativity continues to make everything look better, Dubac Schools' Lauren Dixon.
Thank you all so much for having me tonight. Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that. I'm really excited to receive this award. I love my job, and anyone that asks me that, they know that. That's the first thing I say. I can't wait to go to work. I'm so excited. This is so much fun. And they kind of look at me like, really? Okay, maybe that many people aren't that enthusiastic about their job, but anybody that knows me knows what I am. I love my job at Dubac School, and I'm really appreciative of getting this award. So thank y'all.
What would you say about members of the board? Would anyone like to offer any comments to Lauren or to Principal Pam?
I've been fortunate enough to not only know Lauren through the school district, but been a friend of hers for 20 years, not to show our age. But it's gone on 20-plus years now, and her creativity and her passion for everything she's ever done has always been top-notch. And so, definitely proud of her and what she's done for the district. Thanks a lot.
We always love awards here at the school board, but we do appreciate your... I appreciate your energy and your vitality and all, but we're proud of you.
Okay. I believe they're ready to get on to business. Thank y'all very much.
I wanted to mention one thing. We have the interview committee for the principal shifts that we field. I think Mr. Goddard, everyone's here. I see Dr. Lewis, I overlook that she's on the floor. And we have Bastian, he's up here, he was part of that. And let's see. Ms. Hoffman, yes, Ms. Hoffman, where are you? Okay, there she is. And this is Mainland, she's back there as well. I think Ms. Osborne is not here.
She's just right next to us.
Anyway, this is a fact is passed. I mean, you interview these folks for probably an hour and a half, and I forgot how many you did, I think it was 10, I don't know.
Seven. Sorry, the last one at five, I think we did five.
So, 12 applicants, and so, and we had a good group of applicants as well. And what we tell those applicants, of course, after the interviews are over, you don't usually become principal after the first interview. And so, we encourage them to please apply again down the road as we have openings, as we inevitably will through the years. So we encourage them to do so. I want to thank this committee for doing that super job. And I think they relaxed two ladies, and it was okay during the whole interview process. So thank all of you that served the committee.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. Approved policy manual addition, Ms. Bastian?
Yes, sir. Last month, we would give a new policy that's related to COVID. It is emergency family medical leave and emergency paid sick leave for COVID-19. So this policy is only good until December 31st of 2020. And so tonight, we would ask that you approve this policy for our employees.
Okay, you've heard the approval. We would approve this policy. Motion by David Galat, second by Lisa Bass. All those in favor, raise your right hand, students. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bastian.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Haye, reject bids for the EcoCar building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The background indicates on May 28th, the bids for the EcoCar building were open. You had five contractors. You remember that the building was destroyed by a tornado last year in April. Unfortunately, all the bids that were submitted were way out of range of our budget money allotted, so my recommendation to the board is to reject all the bids on the EcoCar.
Okay. Heard this recommendation to reject all bids. I know it's not the end of the project.
No.
It's just another step. Any discussion, questions for the public? We have a motion to accept this recommendation. Danny Hancock, motion. Second by David Ferguson. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. As President, I might add, too, that we're working, or I'm working, with the district administration, engineers, and architects. We're trying hard as we can to come up with a plan so that we can build this building, get it down to where we can afford it. So that's what's going on.
We can afford a project for our students and teachers.
Yes, it is.
So get them a place to have to work. All right. Consider proposal for employee time tracking equipment. One need to do.
Okay. Let's see. Back in December, the board gave permission to request proposals for the purchase of employee time tracking equipment. We received one proposal from Touchpoint Industries, who is able to provide what is compatible with our current human resources employee management system. We recommend approving this proposal from Touchpoint on a $32, oh, sorry, $33,250, which is within the budget range of our anticipated $30,000 to $42,000.
You have the information there and the finances before you? Any question, Ms. Duke? Ms. Island? Is this a, probably some kind of electronic?
It's a time clock, yes.
Kind of the old punch card thing?
Right, right. It's an online-based system. Takes place in a little time. Right now, we have time maker clocks in place, and that is not compatible with our current HR system, where we can track links and match link to the... and accesses to the actual time work, and this is what enables us to do that.
So can the employee and student clock in?
Currently, we're going to phase it in. It will probably begin after school starts, after we get school started, the new technologies and all that we're going to put in place. But eventually, we'd like it for all employees to clock in, but currently, it is just our non-exempt support staff that's punching the clock right now, and we're going to start the back route first.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Duke? Questions from the public? If not, if anyone understands the motion, motion by overhanders. Second by Ms. Susan Wiley. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Who missed anyone? No, where are we? When you speak, speak up a little bit. Some of people are having a hard time understanding. All right. All right. Leading into the considered request, Kadoka, health plan study.
Okay. Due to reductions in sales tax and use tax collections over the past five years, that's lending the resources to fund future increase in our health plan costs, which we know will continue to increase year after year as they have in the past. We're recommending a complete study and in-depth analysis of the Lincoln Parish School Board Health Self-Funded Health Plan being conducted by Brown and Brown. With this, we involve a summary report with recommendations being provided to the school board on how to reduce our employer health plan costs. They'll be looking at everything from plan administration, member eligibility, premium and benefit cost sharing, plan design, and comparability with other group health plans. David Chalmers, I think Brian Brown's here, and I would like to just let him kind of talk about without all the fail and provide any additional information that he would like to advance to the study that's going to be conducted.
I'm going to pull this down to my mind because we haven't heard you without it. The bottom line of what we're going to do is we're going to disassemble the health plan. We're going to take it apart, and we're going to look at each individual component and service and the company or vendor who's providing that service. And we're going to go out to the marketplaces, we're going to be close. We're going to, again, analyze the benefits, analyze the claims, as we always do, with more depth than we normally do. You know, we do some of this stuff every year, but we're going to go into much more detail here. And moreover, what's important for you to understand is with the backing of the board directing us to do this, we'll have a lot more, what's the word, authority and marketplace when we look to the various vendors and carriers in negotiating on the ways and terms and services. You know, we just go out prospectively every year to a few vendors. They're saying, ah, you just checked the market, you're not going to give us the business. Here, we'll have the board resolution behind us, and they'll know that we're serious about looking at this, and serious about doing things to improve the plan, improve the cost, and so on and so forth. So basically, we're going to look at it, we're going to analyze it, we're going to price out a bid out or quote out all the component pieces, and then we're going to go back and put it back together into a report that we'll bring back to you all. The one thing that I would mention, most of this is stuff that we're just going to analyze and bring back to you. However, one of the things that's proposed is a dependent eligibility audit. We do, if we trigger that, there's no turning back on that, because we're going to incur significant expenses. Our companies agree to cover up to $10,000 of that expense, because it's not a cheap money to take. So we don't want to go there, and thus, we're willing to follow through. And basically, what this does, you know, over the years and the decades, things fall from the cracks, paperwork, medical care, turn to the end, and you end up, group your size on average with 2% to 5% of your dependents who, if they really were looked at, are really not eligible, or really shouldn't be on the plan. And what this does is it requests primarily through the mail, but also through email, through email addresses, the documentation that's required to prove that these dependents are on the plan. And if their members are unable or unwilling to provide that, then those members will be terminated from the plan. So we don't want to pull the trigger on that, unless y'all want to go through with that part. Everything else, we'll bring back to you in information, in information of product that you can review, and we can discuss, and we may even want to meet more than once to, you know, to go through it. I'm sure that it's going to be a lock down.
Is this retirees or just current?
It's on the active plan, and for other retirees, we need to do the ones that are on the self-funded.
Do we just set up a new retired, you know, plan? We don't want to try to mess with that?
Medicaid retirees won't be touched by this. And that plan is working to the extent that our goal is was to save the school board money. It's doing that. It's doing that. There have been a few issues, but for the most part, I think it's been the big ones.
Question.
This man.
So am I hearing that that particular teacher or the member is not healthy enough, then may not be able to continue the plan?
No, no, no. That's not allowed in the law. You're not looking at that law. If you're talking about the audit board, all we're looking at primarily is that you're not the child who is not really a child of, you know...
Oh, yes.
Is it, you know, legally child, and not legally entitled to be on the plan? Also, a lot of people report people to be espoused, who are not legally espoused. So what we're doing is asking for marriage certificates, birth certificates, you know, things like that to prove that they are legally able to be on the plan. And if they're not, then we terminate their petition.
I understand. Thank you.
Something to check with that question, are dependents covered through age 26? Is that...
Through age 26, excuse me.
Any other questions? Do we need an actual vote on this?
We would like to request that you approve or authorize us to conduct the study and gather with Brown and Brown to perform the study.
All right. You've heard the request, then, to authorize Brown and Brown to conduct a full study of the Lincoln Parish School Board Health Plan. Any other questions? Question from the public? Kathy?
David, presently, the risk pool for this, for the plan is just for Lincoln Parish employees. Is that correct?
That is correct. Employees and retirees.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to the president. Motion by Dr. Galat, second by Donna... Put over your left hand. Throw a point there.
It's okay.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. A long bit. Any opposition? Motion carries. Then just call it Ms. D.D. I pick beach in the rain all morning and morning. Anyway, okay. Adopt a resolution acknowledging the change in the election date and to set a revised date for canvassing voter return. Ms. Duke again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mencham. Let's see, if you remember, back in October, the school board called an election to be held originally on May 9th. However, since then, after the COVID outbreak occurred, this election date has been scheduled twice under proclamation, that's proclamations that have been made by Governor Edwards with the current election date of Saturday, August 15, 2020. There is no further action required by the school board to change the election date. The Secretary of State is acting according to the governor's proclamation, and doing so automatically making the changes. And the action taken by the board in October call election for the same purpose is declared in that call is still out. The attached resolution prepared on our behalf, on the board's behalf, by attorneys Foley and Judeel, only gives acknowledgement of the change in the election date, and also schedules a special meeting date for the board to canvass the returns of the election on Thursday, August 2020. So this is as of today. We don't know what might happen, you know, with the status of our COVID phases that we're in at this time. So right now, the resolution would be to basically just set the election, oh, sorry, the canceling return date. So with that, I would like, we require a roll call vote. We'd like to read the resolution at this time, if that will be okay?
Sure.
Okay. A resolution confirming election date change pursuant to proclamation of the governor establishing a new date to canvass the returns of the election and providing for other matters and connection there is. Whereas the parish school board of the parish of Lincoln, state of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority of the parish of Lincoln, state of Louisiana, for school purposes, here's a fore call an election to be held on Saturday, May 9th. And whereas the governor issued proclamation 28 JPE 2020 on March 13, 2020, and proclamation number 46 JPE 2020 on April 14, 2020, set proclamations with any supplemental modifications herein, called the executive order, to schedule, to reschedule elections due to the statewide state of the emergency caused by COVID-19. Now therefore, be it resolved by the parish school board of the parish of Lincoln, state of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority of the parish of Lincoln, state of Louisiana, for school purposes, that this governing authority acknowledges the change in the election date pursuant to the executive order from May 9, 2020, to August 15, 2020. This governing authority shall meet at its regular meeting place, this parish school board office at 410 South Harmonious Street, bust, Louisiana, on Thursday, August 2020, at 10:00 a.m., and shall examine and canvass the returns and declare the results of said special election. All provisions of the election call previously adopted by the governing authority, other than the change in the election date and the canvass date, shall remain in full force and effect. And the president or secretary of the governing authority are further authorized, empowered, and directed to take any and all further action required by the state and/or federal authorities to conduct the election. And there's the resolution as read before.
Okay. Did everyone understand the resolution? Questions? Kathy, if you'll call a roll call vote?
Linda Anderson?
Yes.
Hunter Smith?
Yes.
Arthur Andrews?
Yes.
Liz Matt?
Yes.
Eddie Abrams?
Yes.
Amy Nock?
Yes.
Susan Wiley?
Yes.
Danny Person?
Yes.
David Galat?
Yes.
Lisa Bass?
Yes.
Judge?
Yes. And there's 12 yeses and no names. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Duke. Got a question? Okay. Questions?
Was there a motion in the second on that?
I guess I did. Give the second. Can we make the motion again?
I'll make the motion to the Rockfish Division acknowledging the change in the election date, set a revised date for canvassing voter returns.
Thank you, Kathy, for recording that. 105th motion, second by Ms. Linda Henderson. We need to do the vote again. Are you satisfied?
Well, I'd hate to see, you know...
Yeah.
Linda Anderson?
Yes.
Chris Mann?
Yes.
Arthur Andrews?
Yes.
George Patton?
Yes.
Eddie Abrams?
Yes.
Amy Nock?
Yes.
David Galat?
Yes.
Lisa Bass?
Yes.
Judge?
Yes. 12 yeses. Motion carries. No names. All right. Now, I'm going to accept bids for duplicating paper, dust mop rentals, and fuel for 2020, 2021. Do it again.
Yes. Mr. Anderson's on the way today, so you'll sit in instead. The board authorized bids in April for duplicating paper, dust mop rentals, and fuel for the 2021 school year. We had a bid opening on June 15th. It is recommended for approval of the lowest bid meeting specifications as follows. Puffing paper to Parker Wholesale Paper at $28.30 per case, for dust mop rentals to cap textile service, for fuel to Hill Oil Company.
Okay. Heard your recommendations. I thought computers were supposed to do away with paper, and here we are with two thousand cases. All right. Any questions from Ms. Duke on these items? Danny Hancock? Motion seconded by Debbie Abrams. All those in favor, raise your right hand. In the opposition, motion carries. Ms. Duke. Approved system survey and compliance questionnaires for fiscal year six thirty twenty. Ms. Duke, again.
Okay. This is a recurring item every year as we prepare for our audit. Uh, we have to conduct a self-assessment of compliance with some of state laws that school boards must follow in the certification of this self-compliance, uh, self-assessment to our auditors at the time of audit. Tact, uh, that questionnaire you have before you is prescribed by the Louisiana Legislature auditor and responses are made accordingly. Uh, the approved questionnaire will be given to our auditors out during the season for consideration while they conduct their auditor, uh, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty financial records. Um, we recommend that you approve the questionnaires prepared.
Okay. The recommendation that the board approved the system survey and compliance questionnaire. Question from the public? Question from board members? It's a routine thing we do every year, I believe. Not, not motion?
Sunday.
Motion by Lisa Bess? Second by Susan Wiley and Dr. Doc. Any, all in favor, raise your right hand. In the opposition, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Duke. Approved and restated the Lincoln Parish School Board Employee Group four oh three B Plan, Dr. Justin D.C.
Okay. Um, this one is a relatively new item, but it's a necessary one because the school board has been offering this debt bids for quite some time. Uh, back effective January one, two thousand nine, the IRS, um, made, made employer, government employer responsible for administration and compliance of tax shelter annuity programs. We currently offer four oh three B tax shelter annuity deductions to our employees and, and in order to, um, keep current with the changes that have been made since two, January one of two thousand and nine, uh, the IRS is now requiring that all plans adopt a what they call a volume submitter agreement, which basically creates a uniform, uh, plan structure for, um, the administration of these tax shelter annuity programs. Uh, that is what you've been provided a copy of. It's quite lengthy. When you think about the IRS and the tax code, uh, it's, and you look at this plan document, you can see why, but there's various rules that have to be followed, that this school board is responsible for administering these plans, uh, how much employee can contribute to the plan each year, what type of withdrawals, uh, when they're eligible to take withdrawals, who can participate, notice requirements to employees that must occur annually, various things that we must comply with in order to properly administer this plan. Uh, and to, um, since there's been some changes that have been made since, because of the recent emergencies, um, natural disasters that have occurred, there's been some flexibilities, uh, in how employees can make withdrawals, even just as recent as COVID nineteen, there have been some relaxation in the rules on employees who can make withdrawals and, and purposes for those withdrawals. And so this plan document will make it uniform and update our plan to where being compliance or remaining compliance would are. Uh, so I do recommend, uh, that you approve the restated plan document, the volume submitter plan as prepared. We did consult with a, uh, consulting agency who helped us to prepare this document, update our information, uh, and that would be the next item we get. So we recommend that you approve this document, uh, whichever.
Okay. You've heard the recommendations, approve this four oh three B plan as presented below. Any questions, Ms. Duke? Not, we have a motion. Motion by David Ferguson, seconded by Danny Hancock. All those in favor, raise your right hand. In the opposition, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Duke, again. Moving on again, Ms. Duke. Approved selection of a plan administrator for the Lincoln Parish School Board Employee Group four three B plan.
Um, in relation to the prior agenda item, uh, we'd like to recommend that we name a third-party consultant, this TSA Consulting Group, uh, to administer the plan because of the technical issues, um, that are involved in analyzing the price for withdrawals that employees may make from this plan before they reach retirement age of fifty-nine and a half, uh, and the documentation requirements for hardship that's required, understanding the IRS code and staying up to date with all the changes that happen, uh, such as the COVID nineteen changes. Um, I'm recommending that we do, uh, contract or engage TSA Consulting to be the administrator of the plan. Many school districts already have a third-party consultant, uh, just because IRS code isn't in our realm of business and staying up on top of all of that, so we need, uh, professionals who are in the business, who have the insurance licensure to be able to maintain and administer this plan, uh, to do so for us. Uh, this is at no cost to the school board. Uh, the, uh, contractor actually charges the P to the investment providers. Uh, we have three investment providers at this time who are offering these products to our employees and who are on payroll deduction. They will work out already, actually, they already have arrangements with those providers. I think those are National Life Group or LSW, Horace Mann, and, uh, AIG Valley. Uh, so those are already in place and they have a relationship with this company. Uh, so that should, you know, be a smooth transition for that. Um, and as soon as, um, we get that approval, we'll start working with them on the notices that we need to provide to our employees and, um, to be able to keep current with that requirement under our IRS regs. Uh, so with that, Mr. Mitchell, board, we request your approval of, uh, the grant for four oh three B plan administration services with TSA Consulting.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Duke on this TSA Consulting Group plan administrator? Ms. Matt?
Yes, sir. What is the duration of this term in this contract?
Um, actually, it's cancelable upon sixty-day notice.
So it's essentially an ad-hil contract?
Uh, yes, it continues. Again, it's no cost to the school district. We can make a change upon sixty days' notice if we so choose.
Other questions?
We need a motion. Uh, also, we've approved the plan recommended by Ms. Duke.
Motion by Dr. David Glad, seconded by Debbie Abrams. All those in favor, raise your right hand. In the opposition, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Duke. Well, let's have a little brain, Dr. Lewis. Give a report.
President, I'd like to report two administrative changes, one administrative recommendation, two five-ten staff retirements, ten five-ten staff resignations, one staff recommendation, three points of reference, one custodian retirement, two custodian recommendations, one food service termination, one bus operator retirement, and three bus operator recommendations. And we'll need some of that paperwork ordering for the next.
All right. Any questions, Dr. Lewis? We always appreciate you standing on top of our personnel because it's constantly changing, it is, we appreciate the work you, you do. All right. Again, Ms. Duke, financial report.
Um, you have the first report, this is the sales tax report for the, uh, month ending June thirty. Uh, this is a cash basis report technically for pro purposes. We have one more month of collection representing collections in store during the month of June that we will approve for pro purposes to close our books next, um, next month, uh, the end of this month. Uh, but for the month of June, we have seen the decline, um, in tax collections of about eight pers- eight point one six percent compared to the same month last year. So if you review and you see the last, uh, four months, uh, you can see the declines that we've had, six percent, six point six percent in March, twelve percent in April, thirteen point nine percent in May, and now eight point one six percent in June. So you see the pattern that we're in and the phase of, uh, COVID nineteen that we're under currently, uh, to kind of get an idea of how that's impacting us. Keep in mind, we still don't have our college kids here and, you know, they spend a lot of money in Lincoln Parish at Techin, both in Grambling. Uh, so we know that has an impact. It'd be great to have them back, uh, but so we, we just hope that we can continue to grow, the economy recover, and get us back on track with our sales tax collections. So for the year-to-date total, uh, declined of two point four three percent. Uh, we were actually anticipating an increase for the year when the year started at about two point three four percent, so, um, we can see that kind of went south. Okay. Um, so moving on to the financial report for the month of May. Uh, we have currently in the general fund for the, in, ending this month, a fund balance of four point two million, uh, total combined for all general operating funds, uh, that we try to maintain above that, uh, ten to fifteen percent, more than a ten to fifteen percent range of operating expenses. We are currently at a total operating fund balance of fourteen point three million, which is, um, with an assigned fund balance of nine point seven million, which is about nineteen point five percent, uh, of our budget expenditures. Then we have our special revenue funds, uh, our five meal, uh, currently our child attrition program funds, uh, has, is operating with a deficit at the end of May of seventy seven point five million. Again, we, due to the decline in meals served during March, April, and May, that has had a slight impact on, uh, the performance of this fund and as we pay off remaining salaries in the month of June, we're going to see that decline a little bit further, uh, in, in depth into their fund balance. So we will watch that and assess what the needs will be for the next year and once we complete June. Um, so, yeah, moving on to the M and O funds, uh, on the next page, uh, Ruston District M and O Funds, a hundred, has a fund balance of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, Simsboro School District, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, Dumeback District, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, and the Shuderup District, five hundred, I'm sorry, fifty-six thousand. Uh, what's been helpful is, is that utility costs, uh, in these districts have been charged to these funds and because of the school closures, we have seen a decline in our utility expenditures, uh, so that has helped, uh, maintain these fund balances, uh, through this point, and we should see them, uh, something similar, uh, again, the month before the month of June. Total fund balances of all operating and special revenue funds is twenty-eight point six million. Okay, if there are questions on the financial report for the month of May, move on to the health report. Okay, so the health insurance report for the month of May, uh, we see total net, uh, net increases in our contributions in our net assets of one million ninety-three thousand. Uh, total fixed costs continue to, uh, being maintained around the same as in prior months, but we are about ninety-two percent, uh, ninety-two percent higher in, uh, fixed costs than we were for this month last year, again, because of the change in retirees and now adding the cost of the medical advantage plan, uh, to this. At the same time, our claims expenses for this month is down about five percent compared to this month last year. Overall, for the year, claims expense expenditures only represent about seventy-three percent of, uh, claims at this time last year for the first five months of the calendar year, uh, but administrative costs, again, fixed costs are higher as well. Overall, um, we net out for, uh, excess net assets of about six hundred and eighty-nine thousand for the first five months of the year, so just seeing that, we are seeing some savings to say whether or not that's because of the moving to retire, everyone just delaying receiving, um, non-essential medical services at this time during COVID nineteen, um, emergency, uh, that's, that's still yet to be determined. And I don't know if we'll ever, you know, be able to determine what those cost savings are, but I'm sure as we dig into the plan and look at, uh, the expenses and claims cost, that might come more to light on, on how we're performing there. So those are the financial reports for this month.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from Ms. Duke? I don't suppose our insurance people have given us a rebate since our buildings are not occupied, huh?
Since, uh, well, they're talking about it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they're talking about it.
I think we're all very good.
We're working on that.
Okay. That'd be great if they would, be great. Okay. Construction update. Mr. Bacon, again.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Ryan, we want to get our pictures. Before we, uh, look at the PowerPoint, let me give you just a quick rundown on what's going on in Pre-K Center in, uh, Shuderup Elementary. Uh, you remember that this building is a five thousand square foot building, uh, it's got four classrooms, it's got an office, and it's got a restroom in every classroom. Um, it's being paid for through some of the insurance funds that we got through the fire of the Ed Stark Building, fire. And, uh, I talked to the superintendent, the contractor, this week, two or three times, and pretty sure by the twenty-sixth of July, they're going to be out of there. Building is complete. Furniture's been ordered. As far as the inside, all the painting is complete, wiring, uh, millwork, the cabinets, you'll see pictures of that in a minute. It's all in. Um, plumbing, there are a few plumbing fixtures that are not installed, but they're, they're probably in by now. They were working on them two days ago. The big, the big part that's left on the inside is to put the LVT, the luxury vinyl tile, on the floors. That's what we've been putting in all our buildings, and it holds up well, but it looks good. So they're doing that right now, and that's going to take about a week to finish. Soon as they finish the tile, then they'll hang the interior doors. And they've already been stained and, and painted. So that's, that's pretty well going to finish up the, uh, the interior building. And of course, there's some work, we'll look at these pictures in a minute, um, some, some grays, dirt work, sawed, high definition work on the outside of the building. Okay. The first picture, I, I don't have it. The corner wouldn't work. It, it works on the brick, but it won't work on this high definition screen, so I'll just have to kind of tell you what I'm looking at there. This, uh, roof on this building is a standing seam roof. That's what the architect orders on all our buildings. It costs a little bit more. You can see a partial, uh, the, of the roof there. And basically what it amounts to is that most metal roofs have sheet metal screws, just tens of thousands of them that hold that metal on that roof. This roof doesn't have that. It has a row at the top and a row at the bottom, and they have a machine that they run up and down every seam and it crimps it together. And I didn't understand, they keep telling me, so I got up there, her window, put it off and watched them crimp it, and it's deep, but it, it's got a thirty-year warranty. Uh, it'll be there for a long time, so that's, that's a good thing, even though it costs a little bit more. Uh, the second picture over to the right, that dirt area that you see out there is going to be a playground area for the pre-K kids. And it'll be fenced, there'll be a sixty-inch aluminum fence that goes around that, and along the edge of the building, you see those double doors coming out of the gym. There's going to be a canopy that will start there and run all the way down to this picture over here. The first picture on the left, you see those doors, that's where the canopy will, will stop, so the kids can go to the cafeteria or back into the main building and, uh, when it's raining or bad weather, under that canopy there. And the other picture is just another picture of a, of the same there, the playground area. Okay, Ryan, what else do we have? Okay, this is a picture of the interior. You'll notice that, that ceiling grid, that metal grid that holds the ceiling tile. Uh, if you look up above that, um, in a building that's, doesn't have a fire sprinkler system, and this building does, if you look down the middle of this building, you'll see the sprinkler heads. Well, the whole complex at Shuderup Elementary is not, and one of the regulations is that you have to put a one-hour fire ceiling in all the halls and corners, and that's what you're looking at. And that little red line that you see is fireproof caulk. And, uh, that insulation sticking out to the side, I didn't know what it was, I had to figure it out, it's a little ventilator that shuts the air off in cases of fire. Insulation is just put in there to keep dust out of it. But that, things like that, building codes, that's, that's what makes things so expensive, you know, when you have to comply, and you don't have any choice. I mean, that comes from the fire marshal office. So, anyway, there's just storefront doors, they're all in. Another picture, the same. Okay, Ryan, we got anything else? All right. This is at the, uh, picture on the left is, uh, in the back of the building, and the administration of the school wanted a sidewalk connected to the back door of the building, running down to an existing sidewalk. I'm not really sure, I think if you keep walking down that sidewalk and turn to the left, you'll probably go into where the cafeteria is in the school. So they wanted this- So they wanted this, they wanted this sidewalk, and they wanted the fence along the outside, and that fence corners to the northwest part of the building to secure, secure the campus. And you see the other end of the fence, that road that you see is the car line road that we built last year or year before that they used. So the whole campus now, once they get the gate, that gap there, once they get the gate put in, it's a rolling gate. The whole campus will be secured. Okay, that's pretty well it on the, on the Free K. It's really a beautiful building. It's, you know, there's some old fence, there's some old, that's the mill work, all that mill work and cabinets, it comes pre-finished from the factory. They don't have to stain or, I think, you see the floors, concrete floors, they don't have, this picture don't have the tile on it yet, but they will. Okay? All right, let's change, change schools. Let's go to Simsboro. These two pictures that you see are at the Simsboro Baseball and Softball Complex. And it was brought to our attention that there's some long overdue cleanup work and some fencing work that needs to be done in that area. It basically just looks bad. So picture on the right, that's eight hundred feet of fence line and far off actual purposes, the fence is not even there anymore between our property and the adjacent landowner. So what we propose to do is to get the contractor to remove all that debris, all those trees, clean it off, dig the stumps out, level it to grade, and then put a new sixty-inch chain length fence up. And the other picture over here to the left is in, near the front of the complex, the parking lot. Those trees will be removed, those, that little four-foot chain length fence, four-foot chain length fence went out forty years ago. Nobody puts anything like, like that up again. You put your hand, I couldn't, but anybody could put your hand over that and jump over it. So there'll be a sixty-inch fence that goes around there, and there's some more prompted line that we're going to clean out. But we haven't started yet, probably will start sometime in August to get this done. And the school has the funds to pay for it through their M and O. So it's really going to make things look better out there when we get all this completed. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. All right, report from Mr. Mill State.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. More members in your, I believe you have enough disclosure before we get there here and, and you know how to handle this. So that statement is designed to make sure that we know about or someone knows about the people that are attempting to avoid students. Secondly, I want to mention that we have a parent survey that we sent out. I think I shared that with y'all by email. And of course, we got some updated figures on that, and it didn't change the percentages really at all, but he wanted that. But it appears that about twenty, two thousand four and sixteen responses, and we calculate that's about thirty-eight hundred, four thousand of our five thousand, six hundred, hundred students have responded. And it looks like twenty-five point four percent plan to educate their children at home. And the comment section of that survey, the reason for that was they wanted to keep them at home until there was a vaccine. The survey was going to honor that. So that causes us to look at various things related to student attendance, what that looks like, and we count a child absent that's sick, if another child is staying home to do virtually, do students virtually. We feel like there must be a commitment from parents to do it for half a year. We can't go back and forth, do virtual for the half, vaccine home to come back to school. So those are decisions that we're in the process of making right now, and meeting with principals this Thursday to finalize a few things related to that. And then the first next week, our plan is to get as much information as we know about the parents, although they'll have to begin making decisions. Involve something as simple as kind of masks can you wear, or kind of mask must you wear, it's good. Things as simple as that, all the way to one day of the week, somebody might come because we're in phase two. Phase two has its own problems as far as students concerned. Phase three has another set of problems. Phase two, of course, is much more restricted, and so we're looking at alternatives for phase two, which we're in right now. We're hoping God should be in phase three. Phase three does give us fewer restrictions related to transportation, which is a big problem. Phase two, we can only run buses at fifty, fifty percent capacity. We have enough parents who feel like they've decided to transport their own children at fifty percent, maybe enough to get them all transferred without doing double routes. Now, double routes are a problem financially, double routes are a problem timeline of starting the school. Because a lot of our buses here in town, of course, they run elementary route, then they run high school route. And so in phase two, you're talking about the possibility of four different routes just in the morning and four in the afternoon to that same bus. So that's a problem. So we're going to try, of course, so we're hoping we're in phase three or phase two. We're going to have to reshuffle some routes, so buses partially full, may have to run a part of another route in order to make things happen. So a lot of things to consider in this process. The parent survey also told us things about how parents feel about not only their kids riding and then coming to school, but we have a, have a diagram that shows which schools have the most kids, and I can send that to you individually, by school that says this set of kids are going to come to us on a bus at fifty percent rate, some coming at thirty percent rate, some at a sixty percent rate. Right now, in Lincoln Parish, about twenty-eight hundred to three thousand students ride a bus every day. So that's about one half of our students. So if that continues or decreases in number, then we feel like we'll be able to head to phase two. Phase three is likely a problem because seventy-five of the bus can handle, and we'll be able to haul seventy-five percent of our children that normally, that's where their capacity to go. Bus capacity usually runs about seventy-two seats, or seventy-two kids per bus. And so if we have fifty-four kids riding a route to seventy-five percent, and we'd be able to carry every child without alternating that. So a lot of things to, to consider. We're looking at absenteeism, habit of retrieval absenteeism. If a child is sick, not able to come, not caused COVID, just sick, then, then how are we going to handle that if we got twenty-five percent of our kids already at home? This child stays home, are we going to mark that kid out? I suggest we don't. Obviously, they can log in and go through the lesson, and it's, I think it's going to help our absenteeism tremendously, because the idea is that we'll attract as many kids as we can at home, because they can see a replay of a lesson they missed for that particular day. Obviously, kids too sick to even do that. We'll take that into consideration. So a lot of things to consider, you can imagine. Parents are anxious, as I understand that. As soon as we finish getting all the information from the state for this week, and then move on to next week, we will look at more information from them. And so we'll make a plan, and it's very possible to make a plan one, one week and have to change the next one. We're looking, they've already changed kids down through third grade that's now wearing masks. So what is that going to look like? If the kid doesn't wear a mask, what does that mean? We're going to count that as a dissonant referral. I suggest not. I think we, we're going to be, we're going to urge principals and teachers to be very polite about kids, reminding them to keep their mask on. The typical eight-year-old is not going to be able to keep that mask on all of it. I have grandchildren, but they were, I guarantee they would have not kept that mask on all of them. It's going to be an issue, but we're going to ask our faculties and our principals to treat that in a kid gloves, and sure, we just do what's in the long-term best interest of the system. This should not result in a referral for a child. That's kind of the way we're looking at it. So it's everything from what a mask should look like, all the way to how we're actually in good school. If the governor takes us back to phase one, what's that going to look like? And that's, that's staying at home. So there are considerations also about follow sports. And Mr. Durst here in the United been talking. It's very possible that the state, either the Bessie Board and our state legislature or the governor's office would cancel the call of court seasons for all schools in the state. So that's a problem for a lot of our kids, you know, we have sports, it's not the be all, and end all, and get that, and it is a motivating factor for a lot of our kids. We have kids, and frankly, when I was in high school, played basketball, I know you can't believe that, but I did, I, I lived for that, to go to school. Now, I did find, we have kids that are borderline kids, they live and play sports. I just think we need to go to school and let's play till we out come back, but I don't have the fine sense of it. A lot of things to consider, and we will consider a continued of consideration along the way. So the parent survey's been very helpful, and we're looking at possibly doing that again in a couple of weeks to see if that's changing and make sure that we're on the right side of what we need. Lunchroom considerations, how we feed kids is a big consideration. We're looking at what we thought grabbing dough for kids to go up to third grade. They should go to the lunchroom, take the stuff, and carry the glass numbers carried outside, weather permit and need there. The very, the smallest children who feel like they do not need to be eating in lunchroom, so I can understand the problems associated with that. So we're going to try to socially distance the kids in kindergarten, first and second grade, if we go up that high, in the cafeteria, so that we can better leave their neighbors. So a lot of things to consider for the opening of school, what that might look like. So we've got a plan, we've got great people in the central office that are helping to put things together, meeting the principals on Thursday to finalize some things, and we'll be able to get some more information out about that. Mr. Bash, or Mr. Durst, anything to add to that, to go on, Mr. Durst? All right, the last item I have, I want to recognize, he's sitting back there very patiently, Brandon, Brandon Sutherland, we're designating him a coordinator, he's our coordinator for communication in the district. He has the unenviable task of replacing Captain Cox Bonio, and I'm sure that he's going to be great at that. He comes to us with a degree in communication of Louisiana Tech. He has that extensive experience, I believe eleven years, Brandon, does sound about right, in, in the communication area. We actually seen him in United Book, and he had, he's had many accolades over the last eleven years in marketing and preventing a system, Hampton Inn in particular, Zerrit College, he was one of their outstanding employees of the year. So we appreciate him taking that role along. Brandon, you want to say anything about the, the new role? He's just been being a July at birth, and so we're.
Yeah, I'm real new. First of all, just thank you, thank you for the opportunity to come serve along with you guys. I am a part of the Lincoln Parish school system, and so I'm a former gator, a round, a bear kitten, and a bear cat. And so I'm familiar with the work you guys do here, and I'm excited to get started and bring in information to our stakeholders.
Very good. Thank you, Brandon. Do you like the office?
Was it? Yeah, I'm a little scared of this.
That's all right. Did I, oh, board members?
Come in. I have one statement I'd like to make, but inside your folder, you will find a, a something from some writer. You, like I, probably got several phone calls from a communication from our number one educator to all of the Lincoln Parish school board employees. I chose to respond to one statement there. Hopefully, you will read it, review it with the meaning and the objectivity of that writer. Hopefully, it's not insulting to anyone, and if it is insulting, then charge it to the writer's concern. That's my concern for the well-being, the dignity, the worthwhile of these youngsters and all of the people that we serve in this district. We have an outstanding district, the Lincoln School District, and we improve by all means we can. Thankfully, we will continue to work toward even making this system better. Thank you.
And I want to commend this board for working well together, doing your homework before the meetings and all. I just appreciate everyone's interest, appreciate the respect each one has for each of us on this board, and thanks for working on issues before it gets here, so it's not a full-blown show like some, some other parishes, but we, I appreciate everyone on this board.
Let me make one thing for sure. Be sure you understand when I say the writer, I'm talking about the writer of this, and that's yours too.
You got a comment? Ms. Lisa?